All right. Good evening. It is Wednesday, November 8th. Calling to order our special meeting for November. I will have our city clerk do our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Indupure.
Here.
Councilmember Roisin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Trine, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Great, thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell, will you read the land acknowledgement, please?
My pleasure. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will undertake a motion to approve the agenda, but Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I'd like to motion to amend the agenda and move item number 10, which is the proclamation for Veterans Day, up before public comment, which would be right now.
I will second that. If you want to make that motion, I guess to approve as amended. Is that? Yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, so first up, I'm going to read our National Veterans Day proclamation, and thank you to everyone who came. "Whereas Veterans Day, once known as Armistice Day, was proclaimed by President Woodrow Wilson in 1919 after World War I to reflect solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory that has freed us and the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nations. And in 1938, Congress passed a bill that each November 11th shall be a day dedicated to the cause of world peace and hereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day. And in 1954, Congress changed the name to Veterans Day to honor all American veterans. And observing Veterans Day on November 11th preserves the historical significance of the date and helps focus attention on the important purpose of Veterans Day. And this is the time to honor and celebrate veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. And through their commitment to freedom, Americans veterans have lifted millions of lives and made our country as well as the world more secure. And with respect for and in recognition of the contributions of service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world. I, Kayla Clark, Mayor of the City of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2023, as National Veterans Day." And if any council members or any members of the audience would like to say anything, I welcome that now, before we take a photo op. Awesome. John, would you like to say anything? You just had, got to sign in. And Vincent? Well, thank you for being here. So John is United States Marine Corps retired, and Vincent is a 30-year Army aviator with two Vietnam tours. So thank you all for being here, and if we can grab a photo by the flags and any city staff that are veterans, that would be great. Thank you. All right, thank you again. First up, we have public comment. We'll start with in the room. I believe the signup sheet is coming up soon. Fingers crossed. Oh, sorry, I thought Lita had it. All righty, Steve?
Can I turn this thing on? Yeah, it's on. Okay, my name's Steve Christensen. I've lived in Samamish for almost 37 years. Speaking as a member of the community advisory group, an activity I thoroughly enjoyed, by the way, I have some comments on the Climate Action Plan I'd like to share. First, I'll state the obvious. The solution to reducing annual greenhouse gases output from 57, 578,000 metric tons of CO2 today by approximately 513,000 metric tons by 2030 is to electrify. The reductions outlined in the city council resolution when plotted versus time show an inflection point in 2030. However, the overall slope equates to about 18,000 metric tons decrease per year. On average, each Samamish household emits about 57,000 pounds of greenhouse gases per year. To meet the resolution goal, a household would need to reduce emissions by about 1,800 pounds per year. That means you can make your electric purchases when the item needs to be replaced rather than immediately. I think the document is an excellent start to a community effort to reduce our greenhouse, our carbon footprint. You can see some of this progress, thanks to PSE in Figure 4 bar chart on page 10. Note that the emissions from electricity in 2030 are gone. The Washington State Clean Energy Transformation Act is requiring our state's utilities to be carbon neutral by 2030. PSE's proposed plan to do this is to be 80% renewables and 20% carbon neutral by 2030. Their carbon intensity drops from 0.53 metric tons of CO2 per megawatt hour, that's on page 44, in the 2019 baseline year, to about 0.125 metric tons of CO2 per megawatt hour in 2030. It's not zero, which brings up a question. Should the city be taking credit for the offsets PSE purchases to be carbon neutral? By comparison, Seattle City light carbon intensity is 0.01 metric tons per megawatt hour. That's 19 pounds. The same figure also identifies the biggest challenge, in my view, burning natural gas to heat our homes and our water, cook our food, and a assortment of other issues. Coupled with the expected growth over the next 26 years, you can see that the number is inching up rather than down. Educating everyone in the community, including preschoolers to old folks like me, to electrify must be our mission.
Thank you. Phil? Yeah, you're up. Sorry, I can't see you with the monitor.
Good evening. My name is Phil Ritter. My wife Lynn and I have lived in Samamish for seven years. I'm a CPA and I do financial consulting and project management for nonprofit housing developers. I'm on the Steering Committee for People for Climate Action and was a member of the City Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group. People for Climate Action has been working with our city groups on the east side to address the lack of a sense of urgency dealing with what has become a climate emergency. In the nine years since the K-4C group, which includes the City of Samamish, committed to a 50% reduction in emissions by 2030, there has been a lot of talk and very little action. Until COVID hit in 2020, the per capita emissions in King County actually increased by 3%. This summer, a lot of us realized that the United Nations IPCC call to reduce fossil fuel use by half in the next six years reflects a new climate reality which has changed the lives of people who live not very far from us. The results of our inaction are becoming apparent. The Climate Action Plan you are reviewing tonight is a belated good start on emissions reduction. It sets the policies for the programs and ordinances which will need to be adopted over the coming couple of years. But this council needs to add the message of urgency and needs to be less cautious. If we are to have a chance of meeting the 2030 target, the changes to the draft plan made by the Planning Commission on October 12th send city staff the message that more of the slow walk on climate is okay. We have submitted six recommendations for changes to the current draft plan for your consideration, which we believe will help set the city on a path which has a reasonable chance of reaching the 2030 emissions reduction goal, which is in your resolution of last December. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Celia?
Can I move this? Just move this to the side. Is that okay? Okay. Okay. Please don't, I'll start, you start the clock after I, okay, thank you. Celia Wu, I live here in Samamish, okay? Journalists start their stories with headlines and leads, so I'm going to tell my story this way. Headline one: Communications team comprised of two women of color seek help from HR when confronted by a hostile work environment from the new city manager. Team's work supporting DEI, work they initiated to the benefit of the city, was diminished by the city manager. Team previously sought help from HR and legal when they were publicly pilloried by a council member for being unqualified, asserting that such language in the public square is classic racism. Headline two: Wu requests help from the city manager and attorney for comments by city influencers and formal council members calling for her termination. Calls for Wu's firing stemmed from false accusations that she had violated Sarah Howe Kimsey's First Amendment rights. City does not protect Wu, declining the suggestion of Wu's city-supplied attorney to consider a malicious prosecution counterclaim, given the absence of any support for Kimsey's allegations. Headline three: City manager puts Wu on two weeks unpaid suspension and bullies her into signing a last-chance agreement. Wu asked for a hearing, as guaranteed by the employee manual, and was denied. Now, I will read an excerpt from the letter my attorney sent to the city, to which we are still awaiting a response. Ms. Wu wrote to McCall, Bard, and Sand, an email titled, "Please correct this harmful and slanderous misinformation." These comments came from third parties calling for her to be fired based on false allegations. Ms. Sand's response: "My recommendation is to disregard the article by the high school student and the Facebook post by former Mayor Don Gerrent. Anything you say publicly could be construed as you speaking on behalf of the city." And in fact, Ms. Wu made no response to those Facebook posts and said nothing publicly. She emailed in response to an email privately to the student journalist, inviting her to review other materials that might inform her writing. Interacting with and assisting journalists is a routine function that Ms. Wu performed as part of her job duties." End of excerpt. Which leads me to updating the last headline I read. Wu placed on two weeks unpaid suspension and bullied into signing a last-chance agreement because she asked for help and because she was doing her job, replying to a journalist's inquiry. "To all journalists, public servants, and women of color, stand up for yourself in the face of defamation and bullying. To women everywhere, when a former councilman makes comments implying she deserved it and makes threats to your future employment, call out how morally bankrupt those statements are. To all who are watching, tell the true story and hold power to account." Councilmembers, if you have any questions for me, I'd like to know when you're going to respond to my letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room? All right, online?
If you wish to provide public comment online, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. We have one commenter I will promote. Mr. Stickney?
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Just a couple things this evening. On your resolution to amend the master fee schedule, I notice and am aware that the storm water development fee has been increased from a little, from right about 2,100 for 2,500 square feet of impervious surface to 3,650 square feet for 3,500 square feet of impervious surface. Makes sense for single-family housing. Suggest that you take up a reconsideration for multifamily housing, especially in three, four, and five over one. That would be a pretty expensive burden. For example, for an 1,100-square-foot, two-bedroom condo to pay the same thing as a detached, single-family house. On your Climate Action Plan, send in an email today of a couple topics on four pages that I commented on to the Planning Commission in September and October, both in writing and verbally at the meeting and at the public hearing. And in short, on pages 176 of your current packet of the 304 pages and on page 181 of your 304-page packet, I suggest that you reverse the words affordable housing and change them to housing affordability, as I've mentioned, along with a couple other short thoughts. Then, on page 231 of 304, there's a little more information on that page. But in summary, suggest you add a section for the town center in addition to sections that are there for the future city redevelopment of other subareas and for the neighborhoods. And the specifics are on that page. And the last suggestion that I had for the Climate Action Plan is on page 233 of 304. And that's to work in language to the future land use map that does a good job explaining meeting state, regional, and county housing needs, but just add the needs of our local internal quantified housing needs for lifetime and legacy. So as housing is one of the largest infrastructure assets any community has and has huge impacts and the benefits for a Climate Action Plan, I suggest that you make those changes. Have a good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
If there are any other commenters, please raise your hand. I see no additional commenters. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have executive session. Potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. No action is anticipated after, and I have 15 minutes to start. What was that? Yeah, 7:05? I'm not a robot, but I think that's right. Yeah, okay, thank you. Council's extending executive session by 10 minutes. We'll be back at 7:15, hopefully. All right. Oh, sorry. Okay, welcome back, almost. So next up, we have the consent calendar. If someone will make the motion to approve or if anyone wants to make a suggestion or discuss anything on it.
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second? Right, it's been moved, I'm sorry? Yeah, would you like to?
Can we, can we pull number five, please? That's the fee, the master fee schedule?
Second?
Actually, I don't need a motion.
Okay, so we will move number five to, what is that, new business or unfinished? Sorry. Amending the resolution for the city's master fee schedules, unfinished business, move it there. Okay, thank you. All right, so that will go after item number 16. Alls in favor of the consent calendar minus number five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All righty, so next up, we have the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Councilmember Lamb? Or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
This is proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month was originally established as a week-long observance and over time has evolved into a month-long celebration dedicated to honoring all Native American peoples. And whereas the month of November was designated to honor and recognize Native Americans as the first people of this nation and to celebrate their cultural heritage and integral importance to our past, present, and future. And whereas every year, our nation pauses to reflect on the profound ways the first Americans have shaped our country's character and culture as the first stewards of our environment and early voices of values that defined our nation. And whereas today, their spirit and many contributions continue to enrich our communities and strengthen our country, and we honor their legacy. And whereas we celebrate the traditions of the original people, we cannot forget nor ignore and erase the chapters of violence, discrimination, and deprivation they have had to endure. And we can work together as a community to forge a brighter future. And whereas Thanksgiving and the month of November are an important time for the nation to renew a year-round commitment to honoring and strengthening the relationship between tribal nations and the United States. And whereas we acknowledge we are on indigenous land of the Coast Salish people who have reserved treaty rights to this land in Samamish, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe, and we thank them. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the city council, recognizes the month of November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month and urge all residents to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Then, we have a presentation from David Pyle, our monthly council projects update.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your patience while I was promoted to panelist. Tonight, I have update number 11 for 2023 regarding the major planning projects. First of all, I wanted to just review some upcoming meetings to follow through November and December. November 8th, there'll be a work session on the Climate Action Plan, that's this evening. On November 14th, we will have a public hearing or work session on forming a sustainability commission. On November 16th, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the Parks Pros Plan on November 21st. The city council will consider direction on Town Center Plan and Development Regulation Amendments and supplemental environmental impact statement. On December 5th, the city council will consider the Climate Action Plan with a public hearing, and there'll be a work session on the Transit Plan with Public Works. On December 7th, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. For the comprehensive plan, we're currently at a point of transition where we are moving into really accelerating our review and drafting of the different elements of the plan. We are moving ahead with the traditional elements of the comprehensive plan. That's fairly straightforward. It's something we've done before. However, this year, we will be looking at adding two new elements, which is something, you know, more unique. It's not something we've done in the past. We're also refining the work plan to account for a wide range of other issues and peripheral projects that have come up. We've got quite a long list of things that need to be folded into the comprehensive plan update cycle. So we're working to make sure we understand how everything fits together, the timing on all the meetings, and making sure we're going to end up hitting the ultimate goal. We do need to have our first draft of the comprehensive plan available sometime in April of 2024. So it's a pretty aggressive timeline. Just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. There will be quite a bit of work after that as well, as we work through the different elements and consider public feedback and consider feedback from the Planning Commission and the council. We're also evaluating addition of new items, such as the Town Center Plan and Development Regulations Amendments that you'll be considering on the 21st. These, again, are the meeting dates to look for with regard to the comprehensive plan. With regard to the Climate Action Plan, we recently received transmittal of the document from the Planning Commission to the city council. We're scheduled to have a work session on that tonight and a public hearing on December 5th. And we're also going to be, as mentioned previously, bringing to you the background work to create and seat a sustainability commission. And we are working with partners in the community to begin implementation. There's quite a bit of work that goes into this, especially regarding electrification. We'll hear more about that later tonight. These are the dates regarding the Climate Action Plan. To keep in mind, ultimately, we're looking to hopefully adopt it on December 5th, which will allow us to really begin implementation in earnest in the new year. For the Critical Areas Update, we came to you recently and identified that we were ready to publish our existing conditions report, vestable science report, and gap analysis. I'm happy to say those are now on the city's website and available. And if you have a lot of extra time, there's several hundred pages of documentation you can read through. We're assessing where policy changes and code changes need to be made in response to those reports. We are working with various interests in the community to make sure we're informing them about the status of it and any potential changes that might be coming their way. And we're also looking at some additional outreach to the community for individual property owners that might be affected by things like increased stream buffers. property owners that might be affected by things like increased stream buffers. So we take that very seriously and want to make sure we are informing property owners that would be affected by those types of changes. That's it. For the, I'll see you again here shortly with regard, for several items, so I'll be here.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we are now on to our public hearing section. So first is the approval and public hearing of the ordinance relating to the levying of regular property tax increases for 2024. So Scott and Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to turn this over to Chris Giannini, our Deputy Director of Finance, to tackle this one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I believe Mike is going to have the presentation for me soon.
Yeah, I think Mike is going to be on soon.
Is that better? Okay, thank you, Mike. So just a brief presentation before you start your discussion, have the public hearing on the 2024 property tax levy. Start with an overview. So just a reminder that the state law caps the increase that the council can have for property taxes at 1% a year, and that's 1% of the total levy that the city had last year. It's not 1% per property. So it's for the total levy. Anything above 1% would have to be voted on by the citizens. The 1% increase for the city for 2024 is $296,391. That's an amount that the King County Assessor calculates and sends to the city. We do not have to calculate that, thank goodness. As the assessed valuation of property fluctuates, the property tax rate fluctuates in the opposite direction. So if the AV goes down, which is what happened in 2024 or for 2024, the rate goes up. So for 2024, the total AV in Samamish decreased 19.5% from $35.25 billion to $28.39 billion. And a reminder that only about 12% of the total property tax levy collected by King County goes to fund city services. 64% of it goes towards schools and the remaining 24% to King County and various small taxing districts like Flood Control District and Transit District. So next, we have just a bar graph illustration by percent of the distribution of the property taxes among the various districts. We're using the Issaquah School District as an example. There are several districts in the city that affect the property tax rate for each home. And on the next page, we have the same illustration by dollar amount. So these dollars that a homeowner would pay are based on the 2023 median home value, which we get from King County, it's about $1.6 million. The rate that we're using, this is $7.89, which is the Issaquah School District. There are actually 10 different rates in the city of Samamish ranging from $7.35 to $8.34, depending what combination of taxing districts your property is in. So it can get a little tricky, but you can see the city's part is about $1,557 for 2023 on your mythical $1.6 million median-priced home. So the next slide is an illustration of this mythical home. So the 2023 median home value was the 1.6. King County does not have the median home value for 2024 yet, but we've estimated that at 1.3 million by decreasing the 2023 median home value by the 19.5%. So you can see that the levy rate in 2023 was 98 cents per $1,000 of AV. Because the AV went down, the levy rate went up. It's going to be $1.23 for 2024, according to King County. And because we've included the 1% increase, that relates to about a $20 per home increase for the Samamish part of the property taxes. That's if you live in this mythical home that, whose property value changed exactly the same as the total of King County property value. And that's about it for property taxes. Next, we'll be having you discuss the property tax levy and conduct a public hearing. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or try to.
Great, thank you. So I will open up our public hearing for ordinance 2023-557. And I guess if we have any public comment online regarding the 1% increase, we'll go there first.
If you wish to provide a comment for this public hearing, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. I see no commenters, thank you.
Great, thank you. So we do have an option to either can hold this one open or close this hearing. Does anyone have any comments before we either keep open or close, and then we can discuss after that? I think just close, and then we can do the discussion after for Chris, is that so good? Or do you want to do it now? Yeah, go ahead, ask it, yeah.
What would the rate be if we didn't take the 1%? So you showed what the rate would be for the mythical house if we took the 1%, but what would it be if we didn't?
The rates come from King County, so we would have to tell them we're not taking the 1%, then they would give us a new rate.
So we didn't ask that beforehand? We just have what it would be with the 1%?
They send us weekly a report that says what the rate's going to be, and they base the rate on you taking the 1%. So we would have to ask them, especially for a different rate.
Councilmember, if I may, I think one of the things that, as part of the presentation here, is that the 1% was assumed in the biennial budget that was adopted by council in the fall of 2022. So this is, this is assumed into the budget proposal that you are reviewing as part of adjusting the mid-biennial budget.
But we also know that we have underspend, et cetera, so, in our budget. And I know we can't make those adjustments to the budget, but we aren't going to spend that money.
And Councilmember, I appreciate that, and that's why, as part of the budget presentation, as a follow-up from the October meeting, next, we'll be looking at reducing our budget spend in 2024 accordingly.
Right.
All right, Council, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, so we will close this one. And then I will entertain a motion to approve this ordinance 2023-557.
I motion to approve ordinance 02023-557.
Aye, second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All's in favors, oh, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I think we need to see what the total budget is, because if we have underspend of more than 200, whatever it was, $267,000, do we really have to take another property tax increase, especially with people's home values going down and their rates going up? So I feel like we only have half the information before we make this decision, if we don't know what the budget is. Right, if we haven't had that, if we haven't decided on what the budget is, we shouldn't be raising taxes first.
Councilmember Howe?
Well, just so that I'm clear, I thought that the budget that was developed was based on, including this 1%. We'd already all agreed on that. And so to revisit that, I think would, would that involve actually revisiting the entire budget?
If we've underspent by several-
I'm asking the city manager, actually.
Councilmember Howe, we would have to go back and reassess what the rate would look like and back out the 1% out of, out of the budget. And, and just for council's understanding, moving forward, if we back the 1% out now, that actually would change the, the model that we're looking at as part of the longer-term fiscal look as well, because we would adjust the base accordingly. And so that's work that we have not done yet, because it was part of the biennial budget as adopted, and so we don't have those numbers in front, but that's, that's what we'd have to go through.
Did you?
No.
Oh, got you. Councilmember Stewart?
I appreciate that, but I also know that we know now more than we did a year ago, right? Which is, we've not spent many millions of dollars, right? The budget that we, the expenses that we thought we had are lower, and much of the revenue that we thought we had is actually higher as well, some of it's lower. So I think it's fair to reassess this. It's only, even, even if you don't take it, it's $267,000 in revenue that we would get in the next year, right? I think that's what was flashed on the screen.
Yeah, I think it was 290, 296, I believe, is the number.
I don't know, it went by very quickly.
Councilmember Howe?
So then my next question would be, given the fact that we know that we have upcoming expenses that aren't, haven't been, that we haven't been able to bring forward yet, wouldn't that money potentially go forward and help us, you know, close some gaps with other projects where we know we have deficits?
Well, that's a great, and maybe what we should do is, council could pause on this for the moment, we could walk through the budget presentation and then come back and assess at that point.
I think that would be a really good idea.
All right, so Scott, I believe you are taking item number 14, ordinance 2023-558, the lead on that?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to ask Mike to pull the presentation up. Thank you, Mike. So this is the adjustment to the mid-bienn, the biennial budget. We are partway through, and this is the opportunity for council to take a look and make any adjustments that are necessary. Mike, if you would. So recall that we adopt, council adopted the biennial budget in fall of 2022. As Councilmember Stewart has pointed out, we have revenue expenditure fixture, figures that were originally created with the best estimate of the future, and now we have better estimates as we have moved through the majority of 2023 and looking at 2024. The law does require a mid-biennial review, and it allows for budget updates. It does not require that you have to do anything. However, as part of this process, we are bringing forward a right sizing of the 2024 budget and resetting of the base budget going forward. So recall that the budget itself is spending authority, and that authorizes the city to be able to spend dollars, assuming that we have revenue to back those expenditures. We are also right sizing the revenues and the revenue forecast. As Councilmember Stewart pointed out previously, we had some, some interest dollars came in higher, some other dollars came in lower, and we'll be walking through those. And additionally, we are at the beginning of additional refinements culminating in the next biennial budget. So we are in the process of restructuring slightly on the fly how we do our budgeting moving forward to get a little bit tighter and to be a little closer, and we'll get into that as we go through this, this, the rest of this presentation. So recall at the October 10th study session, brought a presentation forward that focused on the general fund operating budget, because again, that's what funds the vast bulk of what we do. That was presented to council, and council agreed with the recommendations at that moment. Obviously, you all haven't adopted the full budget, and that's, that's a conversation you're having tonight. However, that included a 4% expenditure reduction in the 2024 general fund budget. So recall, we had asked departments to look at 2%, and when those came back in, we did a little bit more looking, and we were able in total to come up with 4%, which equates to about $2.45 million. So we reduced the base budget moving forward, assuming council takes the recommendation. We also looked at the revenue strategy for 2023 and 2024. We had interest come in much higher than expected. I think the Deputy Finance Director was sharing with me that interest rates changed, I think, six or seven times last year, which we did not account for going into, in the fall of 2022, we did not expect that to happen. And so that resulted in much higher revenues than we otherwise would have anticipated. So we are accepting those in 2023 and 2024 to get to a total number. And as part of the recommendation of the consultants that worked with the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, changing our reserve level to 25% of general fund expenditures. Now, that is a higher number than before, but that also reflects the changing how we budget and budgeting a lot closer to, towards where we are much, much closer to, if we go a little bit higher, a little bit low, we would have to come back to council for direction when we get to that point. And that's the work we're going to be doing in advance of the next biennial budget, and that reflects a higher general fund reserve level. And recall, reserves are there to access if and when they are needed in times of crisis or in times of a need that wasn't accounted for in, when we pulled the budget together. So the, the graph at the bottom of the page reflects all of those changes. So in revenues, you'll see that we are realizing $2.9 million in revenues, that's interest income over the two-year period, above what we had, we had budgeted for. And we're reducing by 2.446 in expenditures. So the total difference is a positive 5.347 million, and that will be reflected in the overall, in the budget documents that were attached. So for tonight, what I'd like to do is walk through the rest of the budget. So recall that we were focused on the general fund on the 10th, and the rest of the budget is, we'll be going through tonight, and we'll be going through by fund, just to talk about what's changed. And then at the end of that, we'll look at the fiscal model moving forward for what those changes do to the fiscal model. So for the general government capital fund, again, this is a capital expenditure fund, we are increasing revenues by $195,000, and that's interest income, and we are increasing expenditures by $15,000. That is for a police storage shed that is needed on property. Next slide, Mike. For the Parks Capital Fund, it turns out that real estate excise taxes and park impact fees have been coming in lower because we haven't seen as mu, as much property selling over the last year. So you're seeing a decrease in revenues to the Park CIP of $178,000. For the Transportation Capital Fund, you're seeing a little bit of both. So this is also funded primarily by REIT and transportation impact fees. So same problem, we're seeing less of those than anticipated, so those dollars are going down. On the plus side, we had a couple of projects, you'll see at the bottom of the page, that we had to revise the schedule for. And so that is a reduction in expenditure, which is, turns out to be a positive to the fund balance of $2.05 million overall. For the Stormwater Operating Fund, a little bit more revenue in interest income and some grant revenue, and we reduce some transfers and lower medical costs to the operating fund. Recall, surface water management is a enterprise fund. That means money comes in and is spent all within the same fund, but it does also, it funds operating as well as capital. So that's why there are two separate funds for Stormwater. So for the Stormwater Capital Fund, again, same couple of things, we're seeing increase in interest revenue here, and we had a little bit of change in expenditures, we had a little bit of increase to the George Davis budget, but the Lewis Thompson Tight Line Project was a little bit under budget. And so collectively, that's a positive $600,000 to the Stormwater Capital Fund. Our Equipment Rental and Replacement Fund, again, same kind of deal, increase in revenue. We reduced our sales of vehicles and equipment a little bit, and we also reduced our standby pay and medical premium costs a little bit. So that's a net positive to the fund of $83,000. For Information Technology Fund, you saw this in the right sizing of the budget previously, we had the bulk of the revenues was, something got double-counted, and so we're realizing that, that's a net positive to the general fund, which was already reflected in the October 10th presentation. And then on the expenditure side, the reduction in operating and medical premiums is what allows for that $75,000 reduction in expenditures. The Risk Management Fund, very little, just a little bit of interest income. And so finally, in summary, for all non-general fund funds, you see the totals change to the adopt- you see the totals change to the adopted biennial budget. And so that's the difference. So we did the, the operating first, and then we did all, this is all the rest of our funds, and that gets to the total. And so one note on these, the majority of the funds that were listed in here are restricted uses. So they can only be spent in those funds that they sit in, both for REIT, for stormwater, for impact fees. They have very strict requirements on where the funds get spent. So that's why they are, they stay within those funds. So for our forecasting model, the model is updated, and we will see it next to incorporate those adjustments we just went through. And to councilmember Stewart's point, a projected underspend for the biennium. Now, again, this is a snapshot in time, and this is our best guess right now, looking at year-end 2023 plus what we see in 2024. It includes vacancy savings and some unspent operating funds. And again, the following slides show these projections, assuming no action is taken. So if we did nothing else. For the, what comes next for the corrective action is the fiscal sustainability plan presentation, which will come next week. But this picture, this snapshot we're about to look at is general fund only. So, go ahead, Mike. So the, the graph on the left was the adopted budget. The graph on the right is with the proposed mid-biennial adjustments and projected underspend for the biennium. So it moves the point where we cross over with the reserve fund. It moves it out three years. However, we, it still shows a structural gap that was created by a number of factors, but primarily the 1% restriction on property tax over time. And so this is, it's positive news that we are finding revenues to put back into the fund balance bank. However, that fund balance bank doesn't solve the problem in that, in the out years. And so there's still a need for that work that the task force did on fiscal sustainability. And we'll be coming back to you all next week with the next step in that plan. So with that, I think that is the completion of the presentation. The, before we go into questions, and I know there will be some, I just want to thank the, the entire fiscal team in the, in the back, put in a lot of work on this, and I really appreciate all the help. And we are collectively available to answer questions from council.
Let's do questions, and then I'll open this public hearing. Councilmember Stewart?
So Scott, in the presentation you gave of what you wanted to update the mid by to, you never told us what the underspend amount was.
Thank you, councilmember, excuse me. The total underspend is, we are projecting 4.3 million.
And that's just for the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I know when we talked last time, we had asked for kind of that next level of detail. Is there any way we can get some of that, you know, more detail than just the one number?
I can share with you this evening that about 1.6 million of that is salary savings from 2023, and about 2.7 million of that is non-personnel related funds. So in collective, that's about 4.3 million.
Can we get the breakdown of that before we make decisions on things? Is that?
We can provide a more, a more detailed assessment of that. It's not, it's broken down by department, by division?
That's fine.
Okay.
Because like, just looking at the Q3 actuals, we were already 1.75 million under on personnel. So, and that was just through three quarters of the year. So I'd be curious why we would come up, why our difference wouldn't be even more than that for the underspend in '23.
Well, and appreciate that, councilmember. And recall that the, the monthly financial report is just a snapshot in time and doesn't account for all the spend. And some of the, some of the dollars that came in, because recall that sometimes when we have a staff vacancy, we go out and hire outside consultants to come in and fill in for us. And sometimes those bills don't always catch up at the same time. But we can provide the detail that we do have. We can share that out with council. I anticipate that council will want to hold off on action on the budget until another, a later meeting. So we can, we can get that to council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. As we look at forecasting our revenue, what number, or how do we come to the interest rate of what we predict the future is going to look like? So in 2024, it's such a tricky area. I'd love to know where we think that is going to land. Do you use a hybrid of numbers? How, does it, and does that change all the time? Like, do you make different revenue forecasts based on interest rates as they change? And how often do you do that?
Well, when we do budgeting, we try to, to pick an interest rate that is reflective of, of prior years so that we can get a solid number. There is a number baked into the financial model that is a reasonable number year over year. We did, as part of the adjustment for the revenues for 2024, we, we did assume more revenue based on where the interest rate is at this point in time. So we are trying to account for the change in the interest rate.
Right. It's tricky. It's volatile. Is there anything else in this budget that has a volatility point that's similar? I don't know that there is.
No. The, the interest rate is really the, the piece that, and, and to be honest, we try to be a little bit conservative on the interest rate, on the off chance that it goes down and we have less revenue. That's a worse problem to have, if you will.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Trin?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, on the last slide that you showed, the crossover on the curve, is that 1%? If we take 1% per year, property tax, but we're rising at about 5%, I think, was what we saw on COLA for employment, for our staff and stuff, for running the city. Is that why we're seeing that dip happen so quickly and then dropping? I mean?
Well, so, councilmember, there, I appreciate the question there. Those are a little bit different. I think what I would say overall is that costs overall are going up between 4% and 5% just across the board, aside from, the COLA is a, a staff retention and piece that we utilize, but it doesn't directly reflect, equate to the 1%. Recall that the 1% is relatively speaking, I think you saw this year is $296,000.
So here's, it's related to cost?
Overall cost, correct.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing for ordinance, what is it? 2023-558. And then if there's any public comment online?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. I see no commenters. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Scott, you mentioned this is probably the one we're going to want to hold open until. Did you have like a meeting in mind when this is coming? Or when could come back?
It might make the most sense to come back on the 21st and take, take final action. If you, if council so choose, chose, excuse me, you could take action on the property tax ordinance and the, and I want to double check that we're still within the timeframe for the property tax ordinance. I'm getting a yes from Chris. So we could take action on both of those ordinances at the same time. There is one more ordinance that also goes with this that reflects all three of these, and that's the change to the actual financial policy that reflects the higher reserve rate. And that's the last item on the agenda tonight.
All right, got it. So even though we've closed the public hearing for the first ordinance, we can have it come back?
Well, so there's two pieces. There's the, the public hearing itself and final action on the ordinance. So those are separate. You could keep it open or close the public hearing as you so choose, and we could take final action on the ordinance at a later date.
Got it. So council, does anyone have preference on closing or keeping this one open for the budget? Councilmember Howe?
I have a preference for keeping it open.
Okay, sounds good. So we will keep this one open until November 21st. And council, same question. We've already, I think, moved to approve and seconded the first ordinance. So is that something, I can't remember if it was deputy mayor, or, yeah, deputy mayor Lamb. If you, yeah, if she can remove it, or what would be the best?
So in terms of process, if you want to, basically, as a council, you could have the motion withdrawn, or you can just instead move to hold it over to November 21st. Either way.
Got it. Are you good with the holdover? This is going to hold over your head until the 21st, deputy mayor? Okay, so that takes care of 13 and 14. We'll both be coming back on November 21st. Yeah, thank you. All right, so item 15, I think we'll take these all at once. Who is it? David? Oh, and Kelly, woo! All right. So this is for the, what is it called? Oh, yeah, six-year capital facilities plan for our three school districts.
Good evening, city council. For the record, my name is Kelly Hildy, and I am the deputy director of community development. This evening, city council will hold three public hearings and consider separate ordinances, adopting by reference the six-year capital facility plans for Isiqua, Lake Washington, and Snoqualmie Valley school districts. Each ordinance and capital facilities plan is included in your packet materials. Prior to transmitting the capital facility plans to the city, each school district conducted its own public process, completed an environmental review, and issued a CEPA threshold determination of nonsignificance. Excuse me. Each capital facilities plan includes a summary of the district's current facility and student capacities, list of future facility expansions, projected construction plans, six-year financing plans, and corresponding formula prescribed school impact fee for new single-family and multifamily housing units. Adoption by reference of the new capital facility plans automatically updates the city's collected school impact fee in accordance with the codified formula established in SMC 2109090D to reflect the cost of delivery of providing needed facilities and other capital improvements. The 2024 impact fees for school districts have significantly lowered compared to the '23 fees, primarily due to the decrease in student enrollment. With that said, there are three public hearings this evening, and each district is considered individually. We will hold the Isiqua School District public hearing first, followed by the Lake Washington and Snoqualmie Valley school districts. With that, if there's any questions, we can take those. If there are no questions, I'll pass it back to the mayor to open up the three public hearings. And again, they're separate.
All right. I think it's like the HVAC people. Sorry, okay. There's just like music in the background, just blaring. So I think it was okay to do, open one public hearing for all three, I believe? I think according to Scott or Carrie.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that you can do all three at the same time, and people can comment. And then you can vote on each one individually when you get to those.
Okay, perfect. All right, so questions from council for Kelly? Councilmember Howe?
You know, after taking a look at these different plans being submitted by the different school districts, they're, you know, they're interesting. And I'm trying to understand, to some extent, you know, what is, I mean, we can't affect these plans. These are their plans, as I understand it. And we just have to buy into whatever they have here for the most part, because they're their plans. Based on what you know about the school jurisdictions and the city, what, do you have a, what's your belief in those plans? What I thought was interesting is it did show the decline in enrollment in elementary, the oversubscription in the higher grades. It also showed unequivocally, really, that there's not that many kids that belong to apartments or multifamily dwellings, and far more so in the single-family homes. Is that something that you find is evidenced and supported?
So we rely on the student generation rates that the school districts provide. I do know, for example, that the Lake Washington district has an in-house demographer group that does forecasting on enrollment. They also utilize a third party that does an over-the-shoulder review, if you will, that independently does their own forecasting. Then they compare and contrast the numbers to see the differences and to ensure that there is consistency. So I, I do have faith in that process that they use. Anything else that I might add would be anecdotal. I'm not a demographer, so I don't really know how to forecast out what enrollment might be. I do know that, that there have been some, some disruption trends in, in education and in enrollment in schools. And that, that school districts have been facing correspondingly budget issues related to state funding because of enrollment. So there is that factor as well to consider, anecdotal. But, but nonetheless, there are some changes happening in the landscape of education and enrollment with public schools.
And to that, and I was, I'm thinking about like the proposed school that Lake Washington district is thinking about, that their plan seemed a little squishy. It didn't seem particularly solid. Is there, it seems like that there's some wiggleworm room that they could decide like not to do the school at all. That's what appeared to me. Did you have any, did you see the same thing?
I think your first point with your original comment was, we don't have a lot of control over these plans. These are capital facility plans that go through, through a process with the school district and are approved by the school district board. This is, for lack of a better term, an administrative process so that we can adopt by reference the school impact fee as we calculate it in our code. So, yeah, I, I guess we're kind of mute on the opinion of the capital facility plans. As, that's all done through, through the school districts.
Okay. I understand.
No further comment? Yeah. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, one of the things that you talk about for the impact fees, you say, because the 75% discount factor was applied, just to clarify for the public, that really means a 25% discount, just to be clear. Like, so it's really that we multiply the thing by .75. Most of the other jurisdictions multiply it by .5. So they actually reduce the number by half. We only reduce it by 25%. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Yep, you are correct, and we adopted that ordinance in 2021.
Yep. But the other thing is, I guess I have a sort of a procedural question. Typically, when we go over these plans, we usually have representatives from the school districts here to talk through them. Is there any reason why we don't have anyone from the school districts here?
I am not sure. We have notified them three separate times that this meeting was happening tonight, and I did not receive a response from the school districts, that they would be here in person.
Yeah, normally, there would be someone here to answer councilmember Howe's questions. Okay. Thanks.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open this hearing for ordinance 2023-559, 560, and 561. Though those numbers are probably changed now, completely different. Okay, so probably 557, 558, and 559. Great. Okay, we will take any public comment, if there are any?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. We have two commenters signed up currently. Denise?
Hello, Denise DeFarm with Pacifica Law Group, and I am legal counsel outside to actually all three of these school districts. And tonight, I just wanted to thank the council for considering this ordinance and the school districts updated capital facilities plans and fees. I really had just one comment tonight, and I had sent an email to David and Kelly earlier, but they probably didn't see it before this presentation. But I believe that in the staff report and in the ordinance, the Isiqua School District's fee is understated. I think there's a, it was calculated to reflect 25% of the actual fee versus the 75%. So I wanted to note that. So I wanted to note that, just so that, and I apologize, my cat does this. I wanted to note that prior to adoption, that the fees actually, as stated in the capital facilities plan, should be a little bit higher than what they are. And at the 75% figure, it'd be about $23,264 for single-family and about $5,270 for multifamily. Of course, correct my math. Just briefly responding to some of the council's questions, and Brian Buck from Lake Washington School District may also be on the line. But the Isiqua School District is actually still growing at all three grade levels, and their plan is very similar to last year's plan with an elementary school and a high school project in it. They have seen some increase in their student generation rates at the elementary school level. And then Snoqualmie Valley is growing at the elementary school level. Their fee has decreased because they have taken out their high school project, which was in the plan for a number of years, but now has been fully complete and occupied. So that is part of, the major part of the reason for their fee declining. With Lake Washington, they are experiencing enrollment declines at the elementary and middle school levels, but they are still growing at the high school level, and they are planning to build new high school capacity during the next six years. And again, Brian Buck from Lake Washington, maybe the other commenter on the line.
Great, thank you.
I will now promote the second commenter. Mr. Stickney?
Hello, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Nice to hear everyone's comments, including the attorney with the school districts. I've got a couple of things to add. On the Isiqua packet, I was hoping to see their specific projects for single-family and multifamily student generation that they've had years past. And in this current packet, they just lumped everything, so it's hard to know what that is. Lake Washington, fortunately, had their single-family and multifamily information for the last five years. And general, because there's not time to get way into the weeds on this, but in general, the non-townhome projects in Lake Washington within the city of Samamish have a student generation rate in the neighborhood of one student per household in the last five years. They actually have got four projects in the multifamily section, three in the town center, and one other townhouse project near Northeast 8th. And that's interesting. The two townhouse projects that are in this multifamily student generation have a weighted unit average of .4. So on a factor of 100 units, that's roughly 40 students per unit, and that was the average over those two townhouse projects, Ichijo and the other. The Sky Apartments of 159 units and the Plateau 120 of 92, they have a weighted average of .135. So you could either say 13 or 14 students per 100 units. And what's significant about that is, that's four to five years into those projects. So they've had a chance to, I don't know the term for it, but I guess I would say level set of how occupants are going to act in those types of housing. So that's important information. I just share those things. I noted the reduction in fees as well. Appreciate Councilmember Stewart's comment about the 25% discount instead of 75. That's accurate. And appreciate Councilmember Howe's comments. And one last statement, I went to the Unified Zone Development Process Plan for the Lake Washington School District in September, and they did affirm that the lower grades are having enrollment dropping, and they are going to do something in Town Center, hopefully a ninth-grade campus, to take pressure off the high school.
Thank you.
I will now promote the third commenter. Mr. Buck?
Yeah, hi, thank you. I just wanted to repeat-
Could you please give your title and who you're representing? Thank you.
Sure, yeah. My name is Brian Buck, Executive Director of Support Services for the Lake Washington School District. And I'm just here to, you've heard some of this, but the Lake Washington School District's enrollment projections do include a slight decline through 2028. We have removed the impact fee formula for the construction costs at the elementary and middle school levels due to declining enrollment and lack of growth-related need at these levels. There's still a need to address recent growth at the high school level, so high school construction projects anticipated within the six-year window are included. And as previously noted, our student generation rates were updated to 2023 rates. Our prior two plans paused these updates due to the pandemic. And so our single-family student generation rate decreased from .67 to .60, and our multifamily student generation rate decreased from .15 to .08. So, and that's all I had, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. And I don't know if anyone has any Lake Washington School District questions that are specific. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So I'm assuming, based on what you said, that there's no construction needs for elementary and middle school is why the impact fees went down so much in Lake Washington, because they had a huge drop.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Howe?
And my question would be, you're going to build a school too late to help the kids that are overcrowded today, and you're building it for kids that, in a lower enrollment environment. I'm just trying to understand the logic.
Yeah, so we do have a need at the high school level, and so the project related that's in the Samamish Town Center is to provide high school capacity over the next five-plus years. We also understand that that project could change into a different program, depending on enrollment and depending on other capacity needs.
You know, that's really helpful to understand that, because it seemed from the plan that it was a flexible-
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. I'm not seeing any other hands. Okay, is that it for public comment? What was that?
May we ask a point of clarification to one of the previous commenters, Denise Stifarm? We just want to get clarification. She indicated that one of the fees listed might be understated, and we wanted some clarity on that.
Yeah, so if we can promote Denise again, if she's still there. You brought out your calculators.
I am back. In looking at the staff report on page two, where it talks about the Isiqua School District fee, the single-family fee is listed as $11,632.50, and I think that reflects 25% of the calculated fee versus 75% of the calculated fee. And there was the same issue with the multifamily fee.
If you know what page that's on in our agenda, that would be great, too.
Let's see. I don't know-
So I think we got a 64, I believe. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And just for some further information, in the district's capital facilities plan on page 18, which, I'm sorry, I don't know what page that is in your agenda, the fee formula shows the fee as calculated as being $31,019.07. And then the multifamily as calculated is $7,027.46.
Sorry, I think we are just crunching numbers.
Yeah, we're just, we're looking at that, and we do have the capital facilities plan pulled up, and we do see the fee as calculated listing $31,019.07 and $7,027.46. And we are running that back into the spreadsheet here where we will generate new numbers that we can plug into the ordinance.
All right, does anyone else have any questions for Denise while we have her back? Awesome. All right, so David and Kelly, do you need a moment?
So we do have an update to the Isiqua School District ordinance. So whichever one that will be, we can amend the numbers that are listed in that ordinance. And I think, if I'm looking at it correctly, this is the right one. So what we would be doing for the Isiqua School District ordinance is amending the 2024 single-family per residential unit fee that currently lists $11,632.50. We would be changing that to $23,264.30. And we would be amending the 2024 multifamily per residential fee, which currently lists as $2,635.50. And we would be editing that to $5,270.60.
Got it, thank you. No, that's helpful, because I think you got that email late, so it's good to be able to see that, yeah. All right, so if we have no other commenters, council, are you good with closing this hearing? Great, all right, so this hearing for all three ordinances is closed. And then I will entertain a motion to approve, probably ordinance by ordinance, if anyone would like to make that first motion, for ordinance 557. Councilmember Stewart?
Is there a specific wording, or can we just say that we want to approve the Isiqua Capital Facilities Plan? So I move that we approve the Isiqua Capital Facilities Plan as amended verbally by David and Kelly.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any, did you want to speak to that?
No, thank you.
Awesome, okay. No, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next would be the Lake Washington School District Capital Facilities Plan.
I motion to approve the Lake Washington School District Plan for 2023, ordinance 02023-560.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And I guess that will be new ordinance 558, just for the record. Okay. And then lastly, I move to adopt the ordinance 559 for the Snoqualmie Valley School District 2023 Capital Facilities Plan.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, David and Kelly and Denise and Brian. I think you are still on, though, aren't you?
And apologies for transposing those numbers in the spreadsheet, yeah.
No problem.
So I'm glad Denise was online to correct that. Thank you, Denise.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's great. All right, so back to unfinished business. Oh, it looks like you're leaving, Kelly? Oh, you're still here? Okay, you're not on my list. All right, great. So now we have the presentation of the draft climate action plan.
Great, if you could bear with me for one minute here, I'll go ahead and set up a screen share.
All right, great. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, City Council, David Pyle, Community Development Department. We are excited to share with you all the city's draft climate action plan as recommended by the Samamish Planning Commission. Joining me tonight is Erin Hawking with Brightworks Sustainability, the consultant supporting this project, as well as Kelly Hildy, the Deputy Director of Community Development, Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager, and Rose Weaker, our Sustainability Coordinator. The project started in 2022 and has included many different phases of input gathering from the City Council and Planning Commission, the Community Advisory Group, and other stakeholders. Following plan development guided by a Community Advisory Group, the first public review draft was published for a Joint Parks and Planning Commission meeting that was held at the end of this past summer. After that meeting, the draft was again edited to incorporate feedback from the joint meeting and republished for Planning Commission review. The commission held a workshop on the draft climate action plan on September 14th and a public hearing on October 12th of this year. Feedback from the commission was incorporated into the draft and a recommendation from the commission issued. A new draft of the Climate Action Plan incorporating commission-requested changes has been published for this evening's meeting and is included with the Agenda Packet as Exhibit 1. The goal of this evening's meeting is to provide an overview of the process to the council, identify what changes have been made based on commission feedback, and review the current draft. The council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the draft at the December 5th City Council Regular Business Meeting. In addition to the dates listed here, we wanted to highlight that on November 14th, the City Council will also be discussing the formation of a new Sustainability Commission, which will help lead the implementation and refinement of the Climate Action Plan. We believe the process used for this project has produced a strong foundation to support this important work and look forward to receiving your input tonight. One thing to keep in mind, as we discuss the draft Climate Action Plan this evening, is that this cap, this Climate Action Plan, is intended to be a living document, and we will be continuing to improve the document over time with feedback from the public, staff, and the council. This is a starting point. Moving on to how we have developed the draft Climate Action Plan presented to you for review, you've seen this slide of the project phases before, and we wanted to share it just one more time as a reminder of all the input and work that went into creating the draft you're reviewing tonight. This work leveraged existing resources and tools from the King County Climate Collaboration Cities, K4C, with neighboring cities and other groups to develop draft strategies. They have been continuously refined based on input from various stakeholders over this past year. In addition to our various internal teams and the Community Advisory Group, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, we also engaged K4C, Puget Sound Energy, Republic Waste, our water and sewer providers, the local school districts, the Snoqualmie Tribe, and the Master Builders Association. This wide range of input has helped us modify and identify actions so that they are realistic, measurable, and impactful in reaching our goals. Before we move into the plan itself, I wanted to pause for a moment and ask if there are any questions from the council on the process used. Moving into review of the plan itself, we first wanted to orient the council and the audience to the layout of the document. To help drive the reader to the actual goals, strategies, and actions, we have summarized the background information and development components related to the drafting of the plan in the Plan Development Section, with more specific details in the appendices in green at the bottom of the slide. Background details were deliberately included as appendices because they provide important technical background information, but are not essential to the- but are not essential to the plan itself. We recommend that you take the time to read through the appendices as they provide key information that will help with your review. The numbers shown on the slide here are page numbers that correspond to the chapter or appendix listed. It is important to note that this plan is not a comprehensive roadmap to meeting established goals. The Climate Action Plan is intended to be a living document, as previously stated, and there will be further refinement as we work through implementation. For example, the city will be chartering a Sustainability Commission, which we anticipate will be seated in the first quarter of 2024. Two roles we expect the commission to take on are serving as policy-level advisors on updating or refining the plan and sorting through priorities regarding which strategies and actions are brought forward for implementation. You may note that the plan is not designed to direct implementation itself. Instead, priorities for implementation will be left to balancing community objectives. In many cases, implementation relies on the allocation of funding or budget and the development of partnerships. Naturally, we must work towards the right timing to implement strategies or actions to ensure success. Following the Planning Commission workshop on September 14th and public hearing on October 12th, the Planning Commission recommended the draft Climate Action Plan for City Council consideration with the following changes. First, the commission recommended overall changes to the formatting of the document to more clearly identify priority actions. Second, the commission recommended addition of a worksheet to help community members calculate their emissions. Third, a clarification was recommended to highlight the role of the city in community actions versus the impact that federal, state, and county actions have on our emissions profile. This is most evident in the wedge diagram on page eight of the plan. Most notable to the commission's recommendation is a change to BEU 2.4 to shift implementation of electrification to a phased approach. We'll provide more detail on this change in the next slide. All the changes listed here have been integrated into the draft presented to the council for review at this evening's agenda package. Finally, the commission recommended that, given the composition of the city's emissions profile, that the city's main priority in implementation should be addressing natural gas usage. The commission also made recommendations on priority work plan items for the soon-to-be-formed Sustainability Commission. The Planning Commission's letter of recommendation is included with this evening's agenda packet as exhibit two. As mentioned on the previous slide, the Planning Commission recommended adoption of a phased approach to electrification that first focuses on outreach and education, followed by development of implementation options. Once a community understanding of the issues and need for change are established, electrification would first be focused on those actions that can achieve the biggest change, followed by an electrification mandate for projects of specific thresholds, such as new construction and major renovations, followed by electrification mandates for all projects in life cycle replacement. The project team also recommends this approach to implementation and notes that the soon-to-be-appointed Sustainability Commission should be involved in rightsizing the phasing schedule to ensure the community is ready to make the needed changes. Keep in mind that electrification is likely the most important step the community can take to bring change to the emissions profile of the city. Further, the city does not also have large numbers of commercial or apartment buildings, so to effectively bring about a meaningful change in the emissions profile, we will need to not only make changes to those limited number of commercial and multifamily buildings through electrification, but we will also need to look at how to make changes to the many existing homes and electrify mechanical equipment as well as appliances. For reference, this is the current language included with the draft published for this evening's meeting. Note the early focus on outreach and education, followed by a mandate to electrify not only for large commercial or multifamily buildings, but also for individual residences. Again, if we are to make a meaningful impact on our residential emissions profile, we will need to electrify residences. In addition to the Planning Commission recommended changes that have been integrated into the current draft presented to the council this evening, staff have been working on one additional update to the draft to respond to a pending Community Advisory Group request related to the community vehicle emissions profile. The profile included with the earlier draft versions of the Climate Action Plan was based on vehicle miles traveled and used a factor for average vehicle emissions. This did not reflect the true breakdown of vehicle types in the city. To better describe Sammamish's transportation emissions profile and to track adoption of hybrid and electric car alternatives, staff have been working with the Washington State Department of Licensing to obtain vehicle registration data that includes a breakdown of vehicle type by registration year, reporting out on the number of each classification of vehicle type by year. The project team will use this data to improve the city's vehicle emissions profile. After several months of pending data requests, the city has just this week received the data report from the Department of Licensing, and we are now actively working on an update to the Climate Action Plan, which will be included with the draft published for the December 5, 2023 City Council Public Hearing. The update will include information on emissions by vehicle type and the number of each vehicle type in the city as a baseline to measure against going forward. At this point, we have covered the process to date, the Planning Commission recommendation, and have provided an overview of the changes made to the plan following the Planning Commission public hearing on October 12th. Now I'll turn it over to Erin for council feedback on the draft.
Thank you so much, David, and good evening. We have three questions laid out here. We would like to hear feedback and questions from you all around anything that is unclear within the draft, any areas of language and/or graphics that could be improved, and anything else that you all may think is missing from the Climate Action Plan at this time. So I might start with the first question. Are there any components of the draft Climate Action Plan that are unclear?
Okay, council, I'm thinking that normally we tend to talk off the cuff and ask a lot of questions. So I don't know if we'll be able to answer only one of your questions at a time, if that's all right. Okay, council?
No problem.
Or just comments, I think questions about the Climate Action Plan is probably the best. Councilmember Stewart?
So David, can we talk about BEU 2.4? So four years just feels like way too long to me, especially for any new development, right? So how can we make that faster? Because I'm assuming like the life cycle, right? Or the, you know, things that get built. To me, there's like two parts to it, right? There's sort of stop the bleeding and then, you know, go get healthier type of thing. And so the longer we delay electrification, right, and getting rid of natural gas, the more stuff we bring online that's going to be around for 30 years. So we need to stop that ASAP, right? Like no new stuff that's going to be around for 30 years that uses fossil fuels. So what can we do?
So there was a letter sent this evening by Master Builders, by their public relations liaison from MBAX. And within that letter, there's some messaging that we've been hearing from the building community is that they're ready, but they're not quite ready. That supply chain still is facing issues, that electrification in the current grid of today is really, in some cases, financially infeasible because of the upstream equipment replacement that is required to accommodate a different fuel source for home heating in, say, a short plat. That that simple change could render that short plat financially infeasible because of the cost of adding a new transformer, of retrofitting the PSC underbuild in order to power the new homes in that division. So there's a balance that needs to be struck in the community where we need to make sure that our grid is ready to accept that and also that the mechanical equipment that we're saying should be installed is available and priced appropriately. And also that the workforce is ready to accommodate the type of electrical work that would be required. We're not anticipating a large number of new homes to be built in Sammamish in the near term. That's not to say that, as you're saying, every home that's built, if it's another gas connection, it's another gas connection. So we would be looking for whatever balance the council sees as appropriate.
And would multifamily be on a four-year timeline as well? So if there was a new multifamily building built tomorrow, started tomorrow, would it require it to not have fossil fuels?
So there are some changes that are coming in the Washington State Building Code Council mandated Building Code Update Package that has been postponed from July of '23 to March of '24. If you recall, I sent a communication some months ago about that delay, and that delay was related to a legal cloud around whether the Building Code Council could mandate what it was requiring through the code changes. My understanding is that they have more or less resolved those issues and that they are still going to be requiring the level of electrification that they previously were.
Because I'm going to shock you. You moved here almost 21 years ago, and we were in temporary housing in an apartment building. It was all electric. So this isn't new. This is not new technology. This is not new stuff. This is not hard and new. It's been around for a long time. So I'm struggling to understand why doing something that we've been doing for a really long time is now suddenly hard. So I would like to see us accelerate that quite a bit. Just because, again, the more, every time we bring something online that we're going to have to change and retrofit later, it actually costs way more. So whatever the cost prohibition might be or that we think it might be, bringing something online with gas and then having to convert it to electric five years from now is going to cost a whole lot more. So that would just be one of the things I would like to see us figure out a way to change that. And same thing when I look at like even, you know, what our plans are for our vehicles and stuff. I was in the K4C meeting last Friday. A lot of our neighboring cities, Issaquah and, who is it? Sorry. Several of our neighbors, it's not touchscreen, sorry. Issaquah and Kenmore, all new vehicles that they're purchasing are all EVs for like all their regular vehicles. They are using non-traditional ways to purchase them, but they're still doing it because they've done the calculation that the fuel offset savings is worth it. At the state level, light-duty vehicle conversion is fully offset by fuel savings. And so the recommendation from our state is to do those conversions immediately as well. And good news too, from neighboring cities, from Kirkland and Issaquah, that they are converting all of their parks and everything else to electric equipment. So no more gas leaf blowers and things like that. So I'd like to see all of that try to get incorporated to be a more immediate, you know, as we have to buy new equipment, it should all be mandated to be electric or battery.
So the feedback that I've heard through this process is consistent with what you're saying. However, the partners that we've met with, the school districts, master builders, they've all been, PSC, they've all been asking for us to find a way to collaborate with them in the very near future, the next couple of years, to determine how to best implement this.
So I would love for us to maybe get together with some of these other cities because they're doing it. So if they found a way, I'd love for us to understand how they found a way to make it work. And, you know, is it real that we have to slow it down that much? Or is it just they prefer it? But I think, you know, I'd love to get more of that feedback because this is directly from these cities that they're already doing it.
And they might be doing it on their own proper facilities, but not necessarily mandating out the private development do it.
Councilmember Nupure?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the questions were, is this document useful? Is it, you know, the graphics, are they very intuitive? I found it to be a very readable document. I think in the executive summary for Climate Action Plan focus areas, you know, the first one, transportation and land use. I was a little unclear on what light-duty adoption, heavy-duty adoption, and medium-duty adoption meant. So I'd probably like some clarification on them. The, I know when I go into the details of the second goal under natural resources, that had a little bit more context and details in there. But when you look at it in the executive summary, that's the one that stands out as not being like a typical SMART goal. So I would like to see that a little bit more. And just for my own education, you know, first of all, I'd like to understand, I think, David, you mentioned the state building code, which is going towards adopting all electrification. Are there any guidelines, laws, or any specifications at the federal level?
I'm not familiar with any that relate to building codes or that mandate that buildings convert from gas to electric or that they choose electric over gas. That might come in the form of financial incentives. However, we're not typically governed by federal rule for building codes. We will come back with more information on what the State Building Code Council status currently is and what their current proposal actually would achieve, what types of projects it would affect versus those it would not. It's not all encompassing. It's somewhat limited in its reach. We want to make sure to provide some clarity to you all as to what that would require.
But was there anything regarding reducing the use of natural gas at a federal level?
From everything I've read, what I've seen is the opposite in that it's, there was a court decision related to the city of Berkeley that where they made a change in their codes and ultimately that resulted in litigation. And the federal court ruled that, I think, and I'm going to butcher this, I'm not an attorney, but I want to get this right, and maybe Carrie could help here, that it was, that the city code could not dictate consumer choice, that that was a federal issue, and that they struck down the Berkeley ruling. I don't know where that stands today. There's been quite, you know, some time has passed since then. But I could also ask our consultant Erin with Brightworks if she's aware of any federal requirements that might affect building choice, et cetera.
Yeah, I would just echo what you said, David, that at this time, there's no federal requirements. We are seeing some incentives, the Inflation Reduction Act, that type of thing, to incentivize electrification or clean fuel technology. But at the federal level, we haven't seen anything introduced in terms of banning natural gas or requiring electrification.
Great. And so, and again, this is from my education. Most of the electricity that we consume, how does that get generated?
Currently, that, go ahead, Erin.
I was just going to say, I'd have to look at the exact breakdown from Puget Sound Energy, but it'll be a mixture. Natural gas is in there to some degree, but it's, there's also other renewable factors, wind, solar, potentially some hydro energy as well. So I don't have the exact breakdown, but it is a mixture of different renewable and non-renewable fuel sources.
Do you have anything more to add to that? Great. So I was curious in what specific feedback you had from the tribes and from different communities in Sammamish specifically regarding, you know, getting rid of natural gas.
So the conversation with the tribes was primarily focused on the natural resource elements, natural resource conservation, water quality, habitat, those sorts of things. I did hear from all the groups we talked to a concern about housing affordability and how will this affect housing affordability? and how will this affect housing affordability? I'm confident that with time and with the right volume that, and once the manufacturers ramp up production, that, you know, they'll bring down the cost. You know, we, I just, anecdotally, I just went through this with my own home where we had to replace the gas furnace. And instead of replacing the gas furnace, we went with two heat pumps and nine mini-split heads in the home, and it was expensive. So it's not something that is taken lightly on us, that these types of conversions are costly. However, you can make some money back through rebates. You can, you can make money back through energy savings and cost over time. But that upfront cost is still there. So one of the things that we're looking at with our proposed electrification phasing plan is really trying to connect community members with opportunities to find financing and to find, you know, a vetted list of electricians that can help them with this type of work and really trying to build that foundational awareness. You know, I went to natural resources management school, and one of the things they taught you in natural resources management school is that you, you can't mandate a sense of stewardship. You have to actually instill a sense of stewardship in someone and work with them in order to help them actually understand what choice they're making and why they're making that choice, or you could end up with a public policy failure. So one of the things we're really embracing here is that not all the community is on board with this. And we really want to make sure that we have opportunity to reach out into the community through a Sustainability Commission, through community events, through outreach, and find the right balance for implementation that everyone can find a connection with and where we will be truly successful at electrifying residences in the city and cutting gas connections.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, to Councilmember Stewart's point, you know, when I came to this country, yes, my apartment was all electric. But Indian food doesn't taste the same if it's cooked on an electric stove. Yeah, so I, that's why I was, I was heading towards the community input, right? Like I, and then natural gas is not just for, you know, cooking stoves, but it's also for your heating requirements as well. So, and that's why I want us to be very realistic in this expectation because I know in my neighborhood, initially, we used to have electric stoves and neighbors would go out and specifically want a gas connection so then they could cook on that, right? So I just want us to be aware and cognizant of that. I think another, maybe personal view, but, you know, like you said, Dave, you know, instilling the sense of stewardship or sustainability. I know we talk a lot about recycle, reuse, but, and again, reducing our needs as well. And I think my viewpoint on, you know, especially like if we have to work on replacing our fleet would be to let the current, you know, vehicles reach their end of life and then, you know, invest in electrical vehicles and not just sort of swap them. So that's, but that's my personal view. But I would, you know, not just take our working vehicles and just, you know, switch them because I think they can probably provide more value till, till they don't work anymore. But my last comment on this whole project is, you know, I think this council had a vision to realize the goal of getting a climate plan. And it's, it's such, it gives me such satisfaction to read this document and to see that it was not just the department, which, which just the staff, but it was the whole community that came together and really took the leadership of this council and ran with it and has come up with such excellent recommendations. And I think for me, another sort of very gratifying thing was to see our youth involved in that. So again, great job.
Councilmember Howe.
I'll echo, great job. I remember you stating early days, David, that this was going to be a heavy lift and a lot of work. You were not wrong. But it, what a great result. I mean, it's a really strong document that, to your point, will get worked on and get altered and shifted. I love the fact you're talking about costs because how to make it affordable, how to help people attain the thing that they, that they want to get as they have this beginning bud of stewardship. Because it's a bud, it's not in full bloom, I would suspect, for many folks. And the way I kind of look at like the natural gas situation in specific, it's heating that is the troublemaker. It isn't the cooktop stove, and it isn't your little fireplace or, you know, your barbecue. It's really your heating is generating the majority of the greenhouse gases. So, you know, I look at things as a potential of even a hybrid thing, where new construction, you can put in a gas fireplace, but you know what? You can't do heat, you can't put in gas heat. You know, maybe there's a way to, to stagger it through a hybrid approach, as I'm just saying, and make it so that it's more palatable, give people the, a bit more choice. And the market reality is, is that gas will become more expensive and they'll drop it. It just let, the market will push it. So that is an approach, it's just another way to look at the, this problem. The other question I had had to do with the letter that you got from Master Builders that we all got, because I only kind of skimmed it and just wanted to understand, you know, is it like, you know, say, you know, we're in a climate crisis, I need affordable housing. Is, you know, to a certain extent, we're being mandated to do the affordable housing and to take out barriers. Are we in violation of taking out barriers to affordable housing by putting in band-aids that require increased expense? See, the questioning look in my eyes.
So the feedback I've had from the building community is, and from PSC, is that for a project where the underbuild in the grid is adequate, and by underbuild, I mean the step-down transformed circuit that you would be connecting homes to, not the transmission, but the step, the transformed circuit. And what, what I think is really important here is that there's a huge cost to upgrade that. And so long as you can connect to that circuit without having to make any major improvements in the grid, that it is cost-effective, that there, that there are alternatives for the purpose of putting electric heat in your homes, in new homes, even somewhat cost-effective in, in electric car charging. But that when you have to make those other improvements in the grid is when it becomes cost prohibitive and becomes a barrier. And it's not just limited to new home construction. A conversation I had with the facilities director from Issaquah School District, they've been considering electric buses and considering going after grants for electric buses. But the barrier that they're facing is, is bringing in the power from the grid and connecting the power to the grid is cost prohibitive. And they cannot pencil out buying electric buses because of that connection that they have to make and how far they have to chase it in order to get a big enough draw off of the grid to connect the charging facilities for those buses.
Okay. Well, I'm also just wondering if there's enough incentive for the, like Puget Sound power to even make the improvements that we require? Because I'm concerned unless it's mandated, they don't feel the pressure. They'll just throw up their hands and say, and I'm not saying you could answer this. It's just, can't, are they just going to say, oh, it's just too expensive and the grid will fail? You know how outdated everything is.
So they're eager, they're eager to work with us.
They are.
That's part of year one, step one, step two, is working really proactively. They also see some of the benefits to electrification in terms of resiliency. You know, they're, they're really interested in experimenting with technology around smart metering, with, you know, how they do pricing for energy. They also are interested in exploring the role that electric cars can play in the grid for reverse metering during, during an outage. There's all sorts of things that they want to look at technology-wise, and they see Samamish as a really great opportunity and an early adopter. But they just don't have those plans set yet. So that's one of the challenges. So electrification in itself is a fairly simple thing. Sure, we're going to put electric equipment in homes. But the thing that we want to make sure to remember is that those homes connect to something else. And it's that, it's how far you have to chase it down in the grid in order to make it all work is really where the challenge is. And sure, we could connect a few homes. But at what point do you then have to start making those improvements? Who pays for those improvements?
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, David M. and everybody else. I also watched the planning commission meeting and heard all the commissioners' feedback, which was really interesting and informative to hear that. And I think one thing that had come out of that meeting that once we adopt this plan, then we may be able to join that inter-agreement with our neighboring cities and kind of start to partner with them and kind of piggyback on some of the things that they've been, that they are currently working on that we have not been part of. And so maybe when it comes to some of these building codes, because I think it came up at the commission meeting, that if we were to put something in our building code that our neighboring cities are not requiring, that maybe that would be a disincentive for developers. They would maybe go to another area where such a thing is not required and it's only in a local jurisdiction next to us. And so maybe if we're partnering more with, with our neighboring cities and we would kind of get some benefit from their experience, so I think that that's something to really look forward to. And I must say, when I came here first, the first place I lived in was all electric too, and it still is. And, but I think then we discovered natural gas, and it was cheaper, and it went in everywhere. And, and to some extent, in my own house, I kind of like that I have two sources of energy. I like that I have electricity and that I have gas. And at least when the power goes out, I, my, my gas fireplace works. And so I don't feel like my house goes completely down to freezing when, when we had those inevitable power outages, which we seem to have more regularly now because all of our power lines are above ground. So that to me is another thing that we're probably going to have to face going down the road is where do all our power lines, are they eventually going to go underground? Are they going to have to go underground in order to shore up and remain, you know, make sure that we have power all year round regardless of the weather? So again, that's another cost, another infrastructure issue that we will probably have to discuss going forward. I do not have any feedback on the four questions that were up there. The, it all seems like very readable, presentable to me. So Erin, thank you. And I look forward to us getting involved in that inter-local agreement and starting to work with our neighbors. It's past time, and I think we're all going to learn a lot. And I know this is a beginning, not an end. And so maybe this one, two, three, four-year timeline, maybe, maybe we'll get to speed some of this up as we start making some progress down the road. So thank you, everyone, and those are all my comments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So thank you for working so hard this past year on this plan. I remember when it first started, I wasn't quite sure whether or not it was going to happen, but it's mostly done, and I'm really impressed. You know, it's very comprehensive. I have a, like a list of items, and I'll try to get through them all. Just first off, just to talk a little bit about the electrification and the phased-in approach. I actually agree with Councilmember Stewart. I think three to four years is a really long time. And the source of the email, Master Builders Association and Puget Sound Energy, you know, they have a vested interest, obviously, I think, to keep it further down the road. And like, we just can't keep on thinking like that. And, you know, it's like everybody, and I've said this before, we all have to make some sacrifices. Some people have to, you know, you know, pony up some money. And, you know, Puget Sound Energy is making a lot of money. I think they can afford to, to make some investments. I have a really small detail, and it sounds really kind of fussy actually, but it like bothers me so much that I actually have to say this. And this is like Groundhog Day about the cover graphic for the comp plan, I think that we were talking about earlier this year. On the cover of the Climate Action Plan is a, is a image of Pine Lake, and it has a very large single-family home, which looks like it's about 5,000 square feet. I don't think that that image aligns with the goals of the climate plan. So if we could change that photo, I would really appreciate that. On page 25 of the plan, under what the community can do, this is for natural resources, it says limit pesticide. Can we include herbicides and chemical use as well? I mean, it should include everything and not just pesticides. For Appendix F on page 53 and 54, can we add Samamish in the chart for reference to? That's the chart for GXG and VMT comparison of our neighboring cities. It'd be really helpful to put Samamish in there so we can in a glance see how we compare to our other cities. On page 65 of the transportation part, it's item 3.1 of TLU, TLU 3.1. We are, can you add the student use of metro? We're getting numbers on the number of students that ride buses, but we were not accounting for the students that actually ride the city buses that get to school. And for natural resources, page 85, the goal, it emphasized, the actions emphasize the urban forest management plan, which is great. But all the actions are about the trees, and it doesn't talk very much about the overall natural landscape. So if there are more actions that could be included that benefit the overall natural environment, I think that would be helpful. For example, like one of the actions could be prioritizing landscape services that are using electric equipment, or at least moving away, moving towards electrification. For item, page, page 92, signing the REPLUS pledge, and it says 2025. I'd like to have that in 2024 if we can. There's already 20 cities that have signed. And I see that in the long-term calendar, that REPLUS is coming back next week. I don't know if that means that we'll be getting that pledge to sign, but I'd like to move that to 2024. And I have like a list of other things that I just want to run through really quickly that this is something I'd like the Sustainability Commission, once it's established, to review. I'd like to consider a ban on artificial turf for residential use. Used in residential use, it's non-functional. There are heat islands, and there are PFAS issues as well. I'd like to ban mandatory lawn watering and HOA bylaws. Watering law should be optional in those circumstances and not mandatory. I'd like to review or take a look at how, I know that renew our contract with our waste haulers is now pushed three years out. But in the meantime, I'd like to know how would it affect our city if we had garbage pickup every other week? How much tonnage can we reduce by going to every other week garbage pickup? And I guess that kind of segues into the question. Right now, the goal is 70% diversion by 2030, and we're at 60% diversion. So we're looking at a 10% diversion increase. And how much tonnage is that? And is that a real heavy lift to get to that additional 10%? And, you know, if we did go to an every other week garbage, will we really quickly close the gap? I'd like to ban organics in garbage. That's, we're already doing that in the city of Seattle. And I'm actually not clear on how organics waste is handled in schools, multifamily and business. So I don't know if there's a more clear way that we can at least get that information. I'd like to see in the resiliency section, a way to improve participation in the Neighborhood Disaster Support Hub. I don't know how we're doing in getting people to I don't know how we're doing in getting people to sign up, because, you know, it's part of resiliency, and we know the evacuation plan ultimately will be done, and our neighborhood participation in, or getting the information in neighborhoods would be really important. And that's it. Thank you.
Can I add one thing? So in hearing that list, one thing that stands out that I think we should have highlighted for you all, so I apologize if we didn't do this, we did this with the planning commission, probably should have added to the presentation, is that the Climate Action Plan was really designed with this first draft around GHG and VMT reductions. So those first two sections, the land, buildings and energy and transportation and land use, I think, are really the sections that are more built out. The natural resource sections are really there, we took a first pass at it, but that is really where we see the opportunity to continue to grow this Climate Action Plan and integrate it more closely with things like the Urban Forest Management Plan. So it might not be as mature as we might all like at this point in time. That's definitely coming on the horizon. So just wanted to point that out.
Great, that's good to hear. I didn't know that. Thanks.
Councilmember Trine, do you have anything before we go second rounds?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's really great. Like Deputy Mayor Lamb said, I think we're all a little surprised to have this in November, because I know it's a huge lift. Thank you to our community, no, Climate Action Group?
Community Advisory Group.
Advisory. I knew there was, okay, yeah. Climate Action Plan. Okay, gotcha. No, I think this is good, and I know Phil sent in a few things. I don't know if you received those as well. I think the one thing that did kind of stick out is the mandating to all existing residential and commercial mechanical equipment appliances. I did kind of have a question on that, because, again, you know, economically speaking, for residents, that might be a different change, but just something to consider and be able to look at. And I don't know, you know, with the mandating changes phasing, you know, if there's a way to be like, but if we can start in year two, or some, you know, if there's like a, I don't know. Like you said, we're in a really weird, hard spot, and we have a ton of partners to help and collaborate with. So, yeah, I don't know if there's, how do you incentivize? I have no idea.
I think that's a really good point. And I think unlike any other policy document we have today, this one is really the technology and the policies are changing all the time. I mean, I'm just wondering what's going to happen next legislative session and coming our way. And I think we know that and we understand that. I think getting a Sustainability Commission, a work plan, monitoring our progress, monitoring all the new technologies and legislation coming through will help with those recommendations of, you know, making updates to the plan as necessary to keep it relevant and current. And again, I can't think of any other policy document like, but this one, that we're going to see that. So we're not going to have all the answers today, but I think this is something that's going to continue to evolve and change as we're keeping up, because this is such an important issue to address. So just keep that in the back of your minds. And, yeah, a lot of work coming up for the Sustainability Commission, so.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of my next thing, is like, how permanent is permanent? You know, so when you have, like, new things, you're like, actually, let's change this. You know, because I'm like, so we say year two or three, like, this is the man, I'm just trying to figure out, like, it seems like it's going to be squishy regardless.
So especially with BEU 2.4, that, I think, is the biggest, we keep circling back around on this. The Community Advisory Group had extensive conversations on it. Almost all of the outreach we've done, we've had, this is what we come back to, is electrification. So it's one that, you know, I've been doing the math here on the votes, and I would really appreciate tonight some clear direction on how we should approach this with the draft to bring it back to you on the 5th, so that we can really accelerate that review. What we don't want to do is come back on the 5th and have it postponed to another date, because we really want to move on to starting to implement it and focus on the Sustainability Commission. So, you know, what we, you know, there's a few different options with BEU 2.4. There's the one option, which is to mandate all new construction and renovations of a certain scale, that all those immediately upon passing of a new building code or a new land use requirement are electric only and are electric, electric heating, heating and cooling, and that's one approach. And, you know, that's not the end of the world, we could work with that. Another approach would be to really focus on outreach, as we do here with the phased approach, and maybe move up the mandate to year two. Then, I guess, finally down the line, there's this approach. The thing I think that the planning commission hit on with this in our conversation was that this approach here, this phased approach, is likely more potent than the first option that I laid out, which is mandate for new construction and renovation of a certain scale. Because in looking at the profile, the city's emissions profile, we're not going to make, hit our goal if we just electrify new construction and renovations of a certain scale, that we really have to reach out into the community and try to instill that sense of stewardship and either convince people to do life cycle replacement conversion to electric, or mandate that they do life cycle conversion replacement to electric. And if we don't do that, we are not going to hit our emission profile goals that we've set for ourselves. So I think that was really, we felt that this ultimately, although it represents somewhat of a delay, was more potent in achieving our profile reduction than the option that was previously in there, which was only focused on new construction and renovations of a certain scale. Because there are, you know, it's the whole thing about point source versus diffuse source pollution, that when you have 22,000 gas hot water heaters, it's going to take that much in order to influence the emission profile that comes from all of that energy that's being, gas energy being spent in the city, if that makes sense. It's, we don't feel that we're going to hit our emission profile goals with just new construction and renovation of a certain scale.
No, that makes sense. And I think I like the middle option of, you know, years two and three for mandating, you know, like you said, we can make year one happen. I'm just not, I don't know, because I don't know what, like you said, the outreach and education piece looks like. And so if we did that now before or concurrent with outreach and education, I'm like, I don't know if that makes sense for me personally. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate all of the conversation here, and I have to guiltily admit that I do prefer to cook on gas. However, I want to point out that cooking with gas is incredibly bad for our health. And if we want to talk about equity, right, the more we delay, right, as we build out affordable housing and we don't require that it be electric, we are 42% higher risk for children developing asthma in homes with gas stoves, just 42%. So it's really, 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 really unhealthy to live in a house with a gas stove. It just is. And when you think about affordable housing, part of housing affordability is your monthly bills, right? And you will have lower monthly bills if you don't have fossil fuels over time. If Puget Sound Energy is really serious, then they will lift the cap on what you're allowed to get paid for with your solar panels. So if I put solar panels on my house and I generate more electricity than I need, I don't get paid for any of that extra. So if we really want to have more green energy, then PSE will lift some of those caps, right? And we can have more hybrid systems. There's all sorts of ways that we can do this. And those things aren't going to happen until we tell PSE, well, guess what? We're doing this, you better find a way to make it work. And then magically, they, I think they will. So I would like to propose for this, that we make the mandate for new construction and major renovations above a certain threshold to be as close to immediate as possible. And I know it can't really be immediate, but as soon as possible. And then do your outreach for all of the other parts. And there's a lot of money available for incentive programs. So I think part of our implementation plan has to be to create better conduits to participate in those incentive programs as part of our outreach, to get the requirement for the existing stuff to convert. But we have to stop the bleeding. So everything new we build, every time we build something new and we allow the gas in there, we're talking about 30 or 40 years of it being that way, or the expense of converting it five to 10 years from now, which makes it a lot more expensive. So I think we can kind of find an approach that does both. Because I definitely want people to not feel like we're going to force something upon them in their house that they already have, but I also appreciate that that's really how we make the biggest difference. But first, let's stop the bleeding. So that's what I'd like to see us do. And again, when it comes to the affordable housing pieces, why don't we figure it out, right? We'll go find the money to make sure that as we build affordable housing, that people who live in affordable housing can be healthy, and we don't create health issues for those kids. Thanks.
So I think, obviously, we're going to be split. So I think we have at least Deputy Mayor Lamb and Councilmember Stewart who would like it now. I'm more of like the year two to three. I don't know what else, if this is like, seems like the biggest sticking point right here. So I don't know if anyone else has some other thoughts or ideas. Councilmember Howe, I see you are.
I mean, that's kind of why I was proposing the hybrid approach, because we are at the bleeding edge, and our residents are not. So we have read this Climate Action Plan. We have actually read other cities' climate action plans. Our residents have not caught up to that. I mean, they're getting there, and some are, you know, beyond where we are, right? Some. You guys, you're beyond, you're like gold star people. My concern is that, the pushback is, they're coming for your gas. Because I know that that's what will happen, there will be pushback. And quite frankly, pushback is expensive for us, because it makes it that much harder to educate a population. So I am of a mind of, you know, that kind of a couple-year thing. Kaylee, I'm on board with what you just said, simply because I just don't think the residents are quite with us yet. I do think technology is going to help us a lot. I also think there are chasms in funding that we do not have the bridge for. And there's a lot of unknowns that we aren't quite there with. So we're close, and we're in the right direction. We can always speed it up, okay? We can always speed it up. If there's something that flips, like if Puget Sound Energy comes to you saying, I have a brilliant plan, and it is brilliant and it works, we can speed everything up. We don't have to live with that two-year thing if we can pull in the schedule. But I also think that we are doing our residents a disservice if we are not saying, this is the good and the bad and the ugly, this is what we know, this is what we don't know, these are the programs you buy people to get some money from for a rebate. It's really hard, it's really, it's still really expensive. You know, whatever the truth is, I just want to make sure we're delivering the truth.
Mayor, could I clarify what I proposed?
Sure.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify that my proposal was new construction needs to happen right away, and that we still have the outreach, and we can have a longer period for the other conversions. So that's what I want to be clear on, is that we have to stop the bleeding, which means we have to stop the new construction. So the mandate, the, what's step four, I want to see as soon as possible, and step five can still be later as we do the outreach and education. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I was proposing.
So I have a feeling we're going to just continue to go back and forth. I think we're like, so I know Deputy Mayor Lamb, you're back up, Councilmember Howe, so I don't know really what to do here.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify that what I was supporting was a mandate for new construction, not that we force all our residents to convert to electric.
I think she was adding information. Is that correct?
All I was going to say is that I understood what you guys were saying, but we also had that question mark about new construction for affordable housing. And because we don't have the answer to that, I would like that answer first, before, before. That's it.
Councilmember Napure?
Yeah, quick question, David. If we require all the new construction to have all electrification only, does that require change to our building code? And would that go through the planning commission process?
So it would require a building code update, but that doesn't require a planning commission review, city council, goes straight to city council. I think that this policy direction would give us the foundation to make those changes and bring them to you directly. I wanted to, I've been guilty of this before, but I have an idea that I want to throw out to you and see where we land with it, is to rejigger this here to move step four up to year one, but add an exception to it in the event that there is, and I don't know what scale or value it is, but when there is some major underbuild grid improvement that's needed, that there be an exception granted. And I think that that, what I understand from the building community and PSE, is that is the biggest barrier right now, is that if the grid, the underbuild of the grid is at a certain level of capacity, and there is no freeboard, so to speak, on it, and you're wanting to connect a short plaid of four new homes or a multifamily building, and it would require a major upgrade, that that might be the barrier that is the tipping point. So I would add to that is that electrification for projects of specific thresholds, new construction and major renovations, with the exception of when a grid improvement is necessary of a certain threshold. And I don't know what that is, but we'd have to find out what that would be. But what I'm trying to say is that we don't want this to create, to Councilmember's house point, a barrier to delivery of affordable housing. But at the same time, if you don't have to make that upgrade, there, I'm not hearing from the building industry that there's no reason why you couldn't, right? So if you don't have to spend a bunch of money upgrading PSE's grid, because it does get passed off back to the builder to do that, that then, then there really is no barrier, as I understand it, to making that happen with new construction or major renovations.
Yeah, how about bringing that back on the 5th? Yeah, what you just said.
And that would be in conjunction with this, but we would push step four up to year one.
But like to step two, or concurrently with, in between those?
Mixed in with those, those are all mashed together in some form.
Now, is that good with council? Because I know we have some stronger voices, some quieter voices, so, yes, that is good? Okay. Is there anything else on this plan? Anybody? Cool. Well, thank you, Erin, and Miriam, and Kelly, and David.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
So one thing I would love to learn is, why is it so hard for PSE when all the other providers like Seattle Power and Light and others, they all seem to be able to do this? So I appreciate some of this, but I'm still curious why they seem to be the ones, why the one for-profit electric company seems to struggle with this while others don't. So I like your proposal there, David, but I just think we need to keep pushing on that, because I.
So there's a program in Bellevue, all the east side, called Energize Eastside. There's an environmental impact statement that went along with that. It's a good read. It talks a lot about the problems PSE faces with the Eastside grid operation, and that they've had some potential brownouts during the summer that almost happened. And there are some major improvements that they're trying to make to their grid as part of that. One of the other challenges is, is that undergrounding, for example, is not something that PSE would have to pay for. That gets passed off to the customer under the rate structure in the state of Washington. So we would maybe advocate for undergrounding, and then our citizens would have to pay for it through an increase in electric rate. So there are those challenges, you know, when you have to make an improvement to the grid, to add transformers, additional underbuild. to the grid, to add transformers, additional underbuild, that's paid for by the developer that wants to connect to the grid.
So perhaps we can add this to our lobbying list. How about that? Great, yeah. Well, thank you both, and you'll be back soon. Yeah, great, yeah, thank you. All right, we are going to jump back to consent calendar item number five, the master fee schedule. I'm not sure if that's you, Scott, taking that one over.
Kind of.
Chris, maybe? Yeah.
So we are going to, I believe Audrey Starsee is.
Oh, gotcha.
Paul's question is all I wanted to.
Yep, and I think Audrey is prepared to answer that as the guru of all things storm water. So let me make sure, Krista, is Audrey on the call? Oh, there she is. All right, fantastic. Thank you, Audrey. Welcome.
Of course. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions. I missed a little bit while I was being promoted, so happy to answer any questions.
I think it is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, it was just a public comment that came in about the, the stormwater fees, and it kind of relates to some of the conversations we were having around multifamily and potentially with affordable housing then, as well as, is our fee schedule somewhat unfair to those living in a multifamily because of the square footage? And I probably didn't do that justice, but Paul Stickney had a, a public comment about that, and it, it did kind of resonate with me that, you know, somebody living in a, in a smaller condo shouldn't necessarily be paying the same stormwater fee as someone living in a larger single-family home.
I'm happy to answer. So we have two different stormwater fees that are on the fee schedule tonight. So one is the surface water management fee, excuse me, which is billed annually through our property tax statements. King County does that billing for us. So that fee basis is based on the impervious surface, so, and it's an ESU equivalent service unit rate. And so that billing covers our operating and capital costs. The other, the other billing that is on the fee schedule tonight is our SDC, or system development, charge. And that was something that we worked on with the consultants, FCS Group, with the rate study last year and into this year. And ordinance 23555 pulled it out of, out of code and put it into our fee schedule. And that particular charge is also applied on an ESU. And so one, single-family parcel is billed at one, one rate, the one equivalent service unit or ESU rate. All commercial and multifamily is based on the impervious surface that they have. So often, and for the, the SDC charges, it's the amount for one ESU, and I believe the charge, I have it right here, is $3,654, $3,654 per ESU. And then after that, it's a rate of $350 for each additional 300, $3,500 square foot unit, which is the ESU. So the more impervious that you have, the higher your initial SDC charge, which is that charge that we charge for new stormwater systems to come online, and for our annual fees for the surface water management fees that are also billed in those, that same unit. Each individual parcel for residential has the same, same fee, but multifamily, commercial, it's, it's based on impervious surface and the, the amount they have. Not sure if that answered.
That was a lot of info, and I'm not sure it does answer my question. So hypothetically, if you lived in, you know, a condo or whatever, would you pay, if it was a smaller unit, would you pay more or less or the same as, you know, a, a single-family home? I guess is what I'm trying to understand. Because there was a lot, there were a lot of parts to that, and I wasn't able to do all that math.
Sorry.
I know, you live it. You understand it. We don't.
The, the surface water management fees, the swim fees, I guess, that are based on the amount of impervious surface. So with multifamily, for condos, townhomes, it might be, you know, a large parcel area, and we base our fees off of that amount of impervious surface and then bill it back for those condos and townhomes that may be individually owned. It's actually divided by the amount of units. So usually their fees actually are less, just based on the math.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good then. I just, I just want to make sure that we're being proportionately fair, so.
Alrighty, thank you, Audrey. So Councilmember Stewart, if you would like to approve that.
I move that we approve the new master fee schedule. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Great, thank you, Audrey. All right, so new business, the approval for ordinance 2023560. Is this Scott and Chris?
This is, you get me again.
Awesome.
This one will hopefully be quick. This is reflected, council already gave direction on the use of the higher reserve level, so there's just a quick, Mike is getting promoted here, there's just a quick four slide, one of which is the, is the intro slide, so when I say quick, I'm hoping this will be quick. To, to just, it is amending the ordinance, and while Mike gets promoted and pulls it up, council will hopefully recall that our financial policies are set by ordinance. And so in order to change any part of the financial policy, we have to amend the ordinance accordingly. So what Mike is pulling up here is, the overview is the current, what was based originally on the biennial budget, was based on 10% of operating revenues, and instead, our consultants recommended 25% of annual operating expenditures, because that better reflects what our actual spending is. And so, again, the city's current reserve policy was established in 2005. It's always good to review and reflect on those and, and take another run at it. And again, those other pieces I mentioned. And so the ordinance that's attached is just the reflection of changing that policy. It's just a, a small word change to the policy to reflect the, the different reserve funding level. And, and the, the mid-by-budget adjustment, just for reflection, reflects for 2024 that higher reserve level. So, like I said, that is it. And by the way, this is not a, a operating cost. This is designating money out of our general fund reserve, not reserve, fund balance that we allocate solely towards reserves, so it's not available for other things. We do that now, it's just currently a smaller amount. This would increase that amount. And then over time, if it gets used, then it would be council's choice at the next possible opportunity to refill that bucket, as it were. So with that, council could choose to act tonight on that particular piece, or you could choose to hold that with the rest of the budget, because they're all interrelated, so.
Where was slide four? That was only slide three?
Oh, I'm sorry. Slide four, was next steps.
Okay, great, great, yeah. Mike? Yeah, all right, thank you. Council, any questions or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I move that we amend ordinance 2005-190, establishing a general fund strategic reserve allocation of 25% of operating expenses. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
No, I, well, sure. I think it's smarter for us to have a higher reserve fund, and then to get much more precise and accurate with our budgeting, so that we have better oversight, better transparency on what's going on with budgeting, but we are still having that larger reserve fund, being very conservative.
All right, council, all those in favor for this amended ordinance, say aye. Aye opposed?
Nay.
All right, so six, one. And sorry, Councilmember Trina, I think you had your hand up before I did that vote. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just going to say my no vote is because it didn't include the transfer to the capital fund, so it seems like the motion would not actually do the very thing that you're trying to do in protecting the money in the end, so that's a no vote for me. Thanks.
All right. Are we good there, Scott?
We are. Councilmember Stewart was, was just asking for clarification. The, the reserve policy is for operating costs. The transfer to capital tends to be one-time, and so that's why they're not part of ongoing year-over-year. It's not part of the base budget. Transfer to capitals should, capital should be more of a one-time cost, therefore, it was not included in the reserve policy. So that's what Councilmember Trina was referring to.
All right, great. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mike. We are now on to, well, city manager report, if you'd like to chat some more, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Council will recall receiving an email and a letter regarding the EMS levy task force. So very briefly, the EMS levy for King County is up again. Part of that process requires a task force to look at setting the rate and reviewing all the pieces of the task force. It is baked in that cities over a certain size have an automatic seat on the task force we qualify. Therefore, they are asking for council to designate a representative by the 30th, so we thought we'd get it out of the way. So if, if, council, if there's, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, to try to see if you have a volunteer or more than one, and you all can duke it out.
Councilmember Howe's face shows me she would like to volunteer. Do we have any other volunteers? Alrighty. What? I think rock, paper, scissors. Are we good?
I'd love to.
Councilmember Howe?
Love to.
She would love to do it. All right. Are we set?
Fantastic, that's great. We will, we will let the, the county task force know, the representative for the EMS levy, and they will be reaching out to you once they get things rolling. One other quick piece, as a follow-up to our Veterans Day proclamation today, recall for the public, city hall is closed on Friday in observance of Veterans Day. So want to say thank you to all of our veterans, and we will be closed in, in observance of that. Also, one other piece about meetings, I sent this out last week, but for council to consider whether or not you want to hold the third meeting in December, it's currently scheduled for December 19th, looking for direction on whether you want to continue to hold that meeting date, or you'd like to pre-cancel that meeting and plan accordingly.
Can we get everything done that we need to before the end of the year?
We are planning on it, yes.
I'm in favor of a pre-cancel. Anyone else? Yeah, all right.
Fantastic. We will, we will update the schedule accordingly and, and message that out as we get closer to that date. And so that's all I had for this evening. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Council, any reports? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So I had a Public Issues Committee meeting that was taking place tonight, and so obviously I'm not at that meeting because I am here. I sent out the agenda over the weekend, and I think one of the things to note, because it's relevant, we just had a discussion on climate. So the, there's an item, the King County Climate Crisis Funding. There's a proposal that King County Council is considering a property tax levy lift that will, supposed to generate $1 billion in funding over six to nine years to address climate crisis. The funding is supposed to go to cities. Many cities have issues implementing many of their changes that they want to make, just because they don't have the funds to do so. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Two things, I believe, and I can't pull it up in my email, but I believe that we need to apply for SCA committees, like by the end of this week, is it, or next week? The 13th?
I always lean on Mike to tell me when.
So that's something that we've traditionally been able to manage through a shared spreadsheet, because again, SCA, if two people from the same city apply, nobody gets on. So that's just something we should make sure we take care of, so that we have proper representation. And then the other thing was, we just had our EFOR meeting earlier today, and they have their draft legislative agenda, and I just wanted to make sure that who, I can't remember who was doing our legislative stuff. Okay, so Karen, you have this then. I just want to make sure, because I think there are a couple of things on here that we might want to put on our list. Maybe it's not top of our list, but it's something we mentioned as part of our priorities, particularly the PFOS, I think, item, so. But Karen has it, so I'm all good. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howe?
And I was just going to bring up that EFOR was mentioned prominently at the EMAC meeting, which is the emergency management meeting, because there was a test or a trial to see how emergency services would actually work with a pretend fire in the, in the.
E-bike explosion.
An e-bike explosion, which by the way, is actually something we need to talk about at a later date, but we should keep that in mind, that these lithium ion batteries can explode easily. And so that, they took that as the example. They had several, I'm going to say dozens, maybe even 100 people volunteering to work on this. So this was hospitals, this was east side fire rescue, this was police, this was sound transit, and a variety of emergency management personnel from across the area, working together in concert to try to figure out, how do we solve this problem of multiple people with multiple injuries? So some people were pretending to be injured, and they did things like they drove themselves to the hospital, which screwed everything up, because that hadn't been completely factored in. But I'd be, feel much more comfortable about having Kaylee pick this up, because she was actually there.
Yeah, so in my other life, I am the, a sound transit emergency manager for plans and prevention. So our team put on a full-scale exercise for the Bellevue downtown DSTT, whatever it's, no, I can't even think of it. So it's a downtown station. We had 70 volunteers and 30 mannequins, so 100 victims. And so we had, yeah, Duval, east side fire and rescue, down to Pierce County, obviously Kirkland, Mercer Island, Redmond, Bellevue, really everyone responding. We did have hospitals, we had police, we had, I mean, really, everyone and everything. It was very successful and really good to kind of see how east side fire works, how all of us, all agencies work together. A really good opportunity, I think, for us coming down the line. And March is the next full-scale exercise for the Lenwood Extension, if anyone would like to volunteer. And I think, obviously, we'll be doing some in Redmond as well, which I think will hit home here, and maybe we can even do, you know, something with the city. So it is a really good thing. There's a lot of good planning and collaboration that does go on, and I think we, as a city, definitely want to be involved. So, yeah, I'm glad you're on that committee, so. Alrighty, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Great, thank you, everybody.